Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon and welcome to your Sioux Falls City Council informational meeting. It's Tuesday, December 18th. We'll call this meeting to order. Our second item is the administration update, which we do not have today, so the next item we'll move to is city council open discussion. Is there any city council open discussion? Counselor Staley.
I just wanted to touch base on an issue that came up last week, just for this—Jim We had an issue come up about how we get information from our department heads, and I just think it's a transparency thing when we let the citizens know how this is laid out. So there has been an executive order in place, and it looks like it was way back to Gary Hansen's time, and it states here that—it just in generalities—that if we need something from a department head, instead of going just to an employee of that department, technically, we're supposed to go through the department head for information. And for the record, what I've been doing these last two and a half years is I've developed a way of helping citizens with the assistance of our city staff. We have a wonderful legislative expert named Jim David. So if you call me, John Doe, and you have a problem, I create an email, and I send it to Jim David, and we send it off to the department head. And then we let them talk with the employees of that department. So I understand we are not to go up to a city employee who's out filling potholes and tell them how to fill the potholes. So I just wanted to state that so that our citizens understand what the course of action is. And I think it's always good when dealing with our city and dealing with council members, get it in writing, have it documented with an email, so that we are all on the same page, and that information then, you know, can be traced back, because all of our city emails are, of course, really public property. So that's what I wanted to say.
Any other open discussion? I will just add in this. Last week, I was in peer for the South Dakota Municipal League as a board member and representative for the city council and city of Sioux Falls. We had an opportunity to sit down and talk to county commissioners jointly, as well as having a joint presentation. And then we also talked about many legislative priorities and items coming before session from impacting other municipalities. It was extremely productive, and if you have other questions, I'm happy to answer those or give you more information. It's our annual board meeting every December that we have, and again, we just do that in collaboration with the county as well, just to update you on that. Next item is our presentations, November monthly financials. Director Sean Pritchett, welcome.
Good afternoon. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. I'll be presenting the November monthly financial report for you, and then we'll try to leave some time here at the end for questions if you have any. I will note that we added a couple additional indicators to this month's report. Goal of that in mind is to help facilitate kind of a broader picture view of the local community and economy, and certainly to help facilitate the council's policymaking role and highlight certain things that are happening in the economy as well. So with those new slides, I'll bring those up and make some comments in regard to that. This one you've seen in the past. It is our unemployment rate. As we look at it over the past four years, there's been no real material change there. Our unemployment rate still stands at about 2.2 percent versus the national unemployment rate of about 3.5 percent. This is not a surprise to any businesses that are working in the local economy or operating. It is a very tight labor force. We're essentially at full employment here locally, and one of the more challenging things for our businesses is attracting and retaining good employees for their work. So we'll continue to see this be a major issue and why we've seen this become a major focal point for local economic development organizations to focus on workforce development. Labor force, we did add this indicator this month. It's something we kind of included a little bit for the last couple of months, just a couple of months of data. This shows kind of the four-year history. Where I find this interesting is to, again, kind of support, we talked a lot about population projections here at the council level over the last month and a half or so. So if you look at this, we've actually increased our labor force by about 6.5% since 2014. That's an average annual increase of about 1.7%, and it's very consistent with the projections that we've utilized for different financial purposes here at the city in terms of what projecting growth of users, projecting growth of population. So this data is generated by the U.S. Census and is updated as of September as well. Inflation, again, we're not seeing a whole lot of change here, very stable in what I would call in a healthy range. We were at 2.2%, down just slightly in November. If you look at our prior years, 2.1% is the average for 2017, so we're still in that same area, and that's up from 1.3% in 2016. One reason to keep a look at this, and really the only major change we had is the energy sector came down significantly from 8.9% the prior month. But reason—one reason for looking at this is we will always be tracking what the Fed is doing in regard to the interest rates and what our future borrowing costs will be. Expectations are still on that we will have an interest rate increase in December of this year, potentially two coming forward in 2019 as well. All that, of course, is subject to change, just depending on the economic conditions at the time. One of the slides we did add for this month as well was average annual employee wages. We heard a lot nationally about some stagnation in wage growth over time, and we did see that particularly here locally in the MSA in 2016. Actually saw negative 0.4% wage growth if you looked at the December of 2015 versus December of 2016, 2017, which is the first full year that we actually—the most recent full year that we have data on. We saw about 3.3% wage growth here locally. That's, again, I think, very much in a healthy range and shows a good positive local market for that. You want to see some growth, but you don't want to see exponential growth necessarily, puts some stresses on local businesses as well. But good, solid, just like inflation, just very solid, steady growth as we've had over time. If there is a concern area that I would identify, and it's not one that would be a surprise to anyone, is South Dakota farm income and what has occurred there. What is a little bit staggering to me, and when I actually looked at these numbers, is the extent to the reductions that we've had over this time period. Give you an example, in quarter two of 20—the second quarter of 2018, which is the most recent quarter we have data on, the actual amount of farm income was 17% of what it was in the same quarter of the four years prior. So you can think of that as an 83% reduction in actual income in the ag sector. We knew that 2017 was not a good year, but if you look at 2018, it's even further deteriorates. And in fact, the first two quarters of 2018 were at less than half of what they were in the first half of 2017. So we take a bad year, you parse that down, and we have another bad year ahead. Some of this has already impacted, I think, our local sales taxes, and we've seen that kind of a year and a half ago, when we saw kind of a stagnation of the sales taxes at that time. She's seen some rebounding since then. But the outlook for ag is not particularly strong. I think if you talk to many local lenders, they will tell you that we're looking at potentially two to three more years, potentially a stagnation within the ag sector. The other thing that—I bring this up is, you know, when we went through our last major recession here, if you're looking back at 2008, one of the reasons that we were insulated from that was because we had a particularly strong ag sector that protected us from that, that we may not be in the same necessary position at this time. But it also purports to that policymaking goal of stronger diversification of our local economy and how critically important that is to Sioux Falls. The next numbers we have are our building permit numbers, valuations through November of this year. This is something that you've seen previously. We continue to have strong performance on this. We're about up 11% through November versus the prior year. We had about $735 million in valuations for building permits through November. We had—for the full year last year, $739 million. So we're about $4 million shy of where we were at the end of last year, so very likely that we will see that record exceeded in the current year. To give you a flavor of some of the biggest permits that were issued, the top three, Avera Specialty Campus, which was about $55 million permit, the county jail expansion for $35 million, and the Fleet Farm, $16 million were the top three so far, followed by—and those three represent over $100 million worth of permits, just in those top three alone. That's followed by Citibank, the Sioux Falls Parking Ramp, the Cascade Department Building, and the Windchill Expansion there. The interesting thing about that is—in kind of points to me is the diversification of those projects. We have county government, we have city government, but we also have an office building, we have retail, we have a major health expansion, we have multifamily, and we have industrial, all in those top 10 projects. So we are seeing that diversification. I think that's a real positive thing that we've seen for the community. Another thing that we've added for this month is talking about housing activity. Being someone who's come from the housing background, I find it interesting to see, just from a population workforce development standpoint, how are we doing with the housing. So permits through November 2018, we had 700—excuse me, 656 single-family housing unit permitted. That is about a 10% reduction from last year, but very much in par with where we've seen for prior years. So again, we're very much where we were previously. We had 928 multifamily units that have been permitted as well. That's a 17% reduction from the prior year, 46% reduction from 2016. So we are seeing a little bit of correction in that market, but again, we were at very record highs for the last couple of years. So I think that's probably positive, that we're bringing it back down to what our kind of our normal level has been for this community over the long term. And then we've had about 389 units of duplex or townhome housing, which is down slightly, but ahead of where we've been in prior years. So we're seeing that. That area has been expanding more in the community. Sales tax collections. So we were a little bit surprised. In the month of November, we had a 9% increase in year-over-year in the month of November in sales tax receipts. That equates to about a $450,000 month-over-month increase versus last year. Overall, it's hard to say we're establishing a trend based on one month, but it is the highest month we've seen in a long time for sales tax collections. That did bring our 12-month—if you see the red line, that's our 12-month trailing indicator, and that's a little bit more—a better indicator of kind of where we've been at. We're at 4.6% for the year, so we're likely to end the year at about a 4.5% range when we originally budgeted for this year. We had estimated 1%. So we're well ahead of where we had been on the sales tax figure for this year. We also projected 3% for next year, so feel—still feel very comfortable with what had been projected for 2019. The increase to the 9% this month, is it being driven by some online sales? It's a little early to tell. We will have the December numbers hopefully by the end of the week, so we'll be watching and tracking that very closely, also watching January, February, and March very closely as well to kind of see how those track as we build into the budget projections for 2020. Finally, entertainment tax collections. We show this a little bit differently than we did previously. We are showing the month-over-month, and you can see that that's very—it's very variable when it comes to entertainment tax collections. It's the nature of the collection of what's being taxed, whether it's lodging, the food, and beverages, and it really depends on what is occurring in the community in that particular month that may or may not have occurred in the prior year in that month. What's more important to look at would be that red line. That's that 12-month trailing indicator, and we're at about 3.4% through November. That's been very consistent here over the last 12 to 24 months in terms of growth for that piece. On the revenue side, as you can kind of look at that, we have been typically—so we're 92% of our way through the year. We're collected at about 91% on the general fund. Typically, we've been about 2% ahead on a proportional basis versus last year. We're now about 1% behind, and overall, we're a little bit undercollected from where we were previously in terms of revenue. What's driving that primarily is because we did have a big increase in sales taxes, we have a $3 million reduction in property taxes. That is a timing issue that we talked to the county about. The receipts that came in at the very end of October, which we would have received in November, did not get recorded until November, so we will not receive them until December. So we will, according to them, see a correction. We should see this brought back up, and we should see an increase in property taxes as we had expected for the year. So we do expect that we will have stronger performance in December, just generally related to those property tax figures. We're also about down about $1.7 million in charges. You can see that kind of in that chart where we see a reduction there. That's being driven in part mostly by our community health service. We have had two dentist positions and a physician's position that have been left—that have not been filled, so we haven't had been able to provide the services that we typically had projected, and that's reducing the charges for services that we've had there. Finally, the last indicator that we include is our general fund expenditures year-to-date. Again, we're kind of 92% of the way through the year. We're at about 84% expended compared to 82% last year. We expect that we'll reign—still be in that 2% to 3% turnback position that we've had previously estimated on a typical basis for the expenditures. We will see more expenses coming up in December, which is typical for that month as we accrue for the end of the year, and we true up all of the expenses that will fall into December, even if some of them roll into January for the following year. With that, I'm also going to give you a heads-up. In January, February, we will bring forward a resolution on bad debt, which is typical. That will do it January. I don't see anything significant there that will be coming forward in respect to the bad debt that would be asked to be written off. I'm also going to respond to earlier. Counselor Erickson had forwarded a question in regard to kind of where we sit on projects for bidding. Were they coming in over budget? Were we having to rebid certain projects? We had to do this a year and a half, two years ago, when we had to pull back because the sales taxes were down. Kind of where do we sit presently? Just to kind of give you a very short and brief summary of some of those, we didn't see outside of public works a significant amount of this type of activity. We did do a bid for the auto-visual improvements at the convention center that came in higher than originally anticipated. We did have a lower bidder that we think we can work with, make some modifications to get it back to where we had originally expected. Another one that came in significantly higher was a retaining wall that's to be replaced in front of Washington Pavilion, came in about 50% higher than we had expected. Some of that is driven in part of—to the phenomenon I'm going to talk about here in a second. Part of it is due to the—just—it's a historic nature of the retaining wall, so there are certain steps that we have to follow in terms of making sure it's reassembled, similar to what—it—how it was deconstructed. So there's—that has added some additional cost there, but we are planning to rebid that project in January or February and try to make a few changes that will reduce that cost. In talking about in generality, public works certainly has a bigger portion of our CIP and impact from bidding as it goes on throughout the year. Couple of phenomenon to be aware of that occurred in 2018. Number one, as you can see from our building permit data, we had a very strong year. Contractors had a lot of work available to them, and if you can see, you know, with many of the major projects that they're working on, whether working with excavators, or working with HVAC contractors, we are sometimes using the same contractors that the private market is utilizing. At the same time, we also had a very robust public works, just in general throughout the region. There was a lot of public works projects going on. So there was a lot of activity for contractors that made it a little bit more difficult to solicit bids as we kind of went through the year. The second thing that occurred is the wet weather that occurred this year that delayed many projects. So contractors were very much focused on trying to complete what they had already began work on, and so new projects, smaller projects that we might have been bidding later on in the year, we had a little bit more—we had some projects that didn't receive any bids, so we've had to delay because of that. Or you may see some bids coming in that were much higher, because what—with the contractor, if they don't need the work or they don't have the time for the work, they're going to—if they do bid, do choose to bid, they're going to bid it very high. So probably, I would say, in talking with Director Cotter, a little bit more, this year, we have delayed some projects into 2019 that we might not have previously due to what was going on in that particular—going on this particular year, the difficulty there. An example that we had talked about, 12th Street reconstruction from Minnesota, four blocks to the west. It was really hoped that we could do that project beginning in 2018 and finishing it in 2019. Now, it's probably going to be a 2019-2020 project. The other example that we had talked about was an equalization basin, which was a two-part project. One portion came in—of that project came in as expected, and the other phase came in over what we had originally expected. So we ended up having to reject the bids, and we're going to be going back to the market with that. If you talk with some contractors, and I know it has been some of our experience here recently as well, is now by waiting until fall into winter of this year, rebidding some of these projects, we are seeing some of those prices come back in line with where we had expected, because the contractors have wrapped up a lot of the work and the delays that they occurred in the last year. So we are seeing some of that come back at to the level that we've had. We have benefited that we—we do have a very good and competitive pricing market here. We have a good relationship with the contractors. They like doing business with the city of Sioux Falls. We pay on time, and we've generally been a good one to work with. So when we have the ability, we do attract good and competitive bids, and we're very lucky in that respect. So any other questions?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being proactive in answering that for me today. Any questions from the council on the presentation? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director. That's great. I really appreciate the extra pieces that you've added. I think they really bring to light a number of things, whether it's the pay, average pay of the city. But the one that really stood out me—for me was the South Dakota farm income. You know, we keep talking about the farm economy being bad in South Dakota, and we just kind of take it for general—or, you know, yeah, we understand things are bad. This really brought it to light about how bad it is. If you can—can you flip back that far? And there we go. The one thing that, again, that really stood out to me is, again, how bad it has gotten just in such a short period of time. You know, we started thinking about the trade war with China and soybean farmers, and we continue that the—this trade war has really hurt, but they were hurting long before that. And I think you said that in your comments, that it was bad, and then it's even gotten worse because of the recent trade policies that we're trying to renegotiate, or whatever we're trying to do on a federal level. I was glad to hear there's another set of payments that are coming to make some of the farmers whole. It won't get them there, but it'll at least make a difference. And when we keep looking at sales tax and saying it is the ag economy, I kind of say, yeah, that's part of it. But this really drives that point home that's there. The one other place that I did have a quick question was on sales tax collections. Without audits, obviously, is going to make a huge difference, that there could have been the possibility of some audit money that's included in that that we didn't know about, or it sure looks to me like we missed a payment in October, and it went over into November would be one of the things that would stand out to me. Did we miss months, kind of like what you were talking about with the property tax, or?
We actually called the state when we saw the amount that it was higher, because we were concerned there was a mistake somewhere. The state in general saw a 6.5% increase, so they certainly saw an increase as well, just not to the degree. Rapid City kind of followed suit with Sioux Falls. They also had a significant increase also. So there appears not to have been a real glitch with the data, other than we'll kind of see what happens in December and see what's happening there.
That's why the—I think the 12-month rolling really makes a difference to really give you kind of an idea of where we're headed, so it probably makes sense. And I—this will probably work itself out. I mean, that October wasn't as scary as we thought at the time, and there was something happening. There was some pent-up demand, or there was some—I'm not sure how that times out with some of the closings at the mall and different things, too, that maybe there were some closeout sales that really hit, or—but maybe it's an overall thing. It'll be a good thing if it carries through. So, thank you.
Counselor Staley.
First of all, Sean, thank you. This is really, really well done. Appreciate it. Explain some instances of bad debt.
The—we have—so there's certain bad debt, and I'll have to go back and think on the resolution, because I've seen the resolution that we've had for the bad debt. A lot of it sometimes is assessments that the city might have made on a property that has either been extinguished for any variety of reasons. So then we would have to go through and procedurally clean up some of those bad debts that are uncollectible to a certain extent. I'm trying to think of what else was on there. Restitutions, yeah, typically that were on there that are going to be uncollectible.
What do you mean restitutions?
Those are the ones that are placed on the properties. Yeah, that are placed on a property. So maybe there was something—we had to go in and mow the property or something like that, and we had to place a lien against it because of that.
Would that ever be because someone can't pay their water bill?
There—to my recollection—I'm not aware of anything of that nature, no. And not on the current resolution. I think there's only like four items that I think are coming up on that particular resolution.
Okay, then, I was really appreciative of what you said about that retaining wall at the Pavilion, and you said that you're going to rebid that to get a few—see if you can make a few changes to reduce the cost. And personally, just a personal note here, I would like to see us have a little more of responsibility towards our spending in that same manner, that I think sometimes what I'm observing in these two and a half years is that we are a little bit frivolous with how we throw money out. So I appreciate that attitude. I hope you're going to continue to embrace that moving forward. One thing I'd ask from you, and I don't know if this is possible, but I've brought it up in the past, is I would love to come up with some kind of a formula that we can apply to these building permits, because we were hearing millions of dollars in building permits, and I've asked this, and other people have asked, what does that really sift down to actual income for the city? And if there's some way you could have a formula, that would be great. What I've been told in the past is that it sounds like you got—it's way out there in the future as to what the benefit will be down the road. So I would appreciate that. And then the last thing I want to ask, are you going to be involved with our department heads as they start formulating the budget for 2019? Do you have some kind of a place with that?
Yes. In fact, we are already going to start those discussions. We're actually going out to meet in January with our department heads to kind of talk about what their priorities are going to be as we begin that process with them. But we've also had a lot of discussions about—as department heads—how we work more collectively together as well in the preparation of that budget.
And just a side note, that I sent out an email to the council last week, but I would love to have us also meeting. Maybe we could even have you in on that meeting, but I think I'd love to have a working session where we're throwing out some of our priorities, because it always seems like we get involved in the process at the end of the game after the scoreboard has been shut down. And I think this would be the great time during the spring training to have us get on the team, too, and say some things that are important to us. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Director? I just have one. If we—I don't want to jinx us. I'm almost like not wanting to ask this question, but since we did the supplemental appropriation for snow, and I hope we don't need it, but, you know, we just have a few weeks left of the year. What happens if that's unused?
Well, for one thing, that was a conditional approval, so we don't even have it showing as appearing as a supplement, because it would only become a supplement should we ever need to use it. Right now, we're probably looking at current estimates of still a million-dollar turnback from the street's budget, and so there's still room there to absorb, I would say, maybe two snow events, and Director Cotter may correct me on that. And it'll depend on the severity of the snow events. The first one, you know, we haven't had a major snow event, but we did—you know, there was significant expense related to the salting and de-icing in the last snow event. So there—even though they weren't pushing snow to in a great extent, we did have a large expense related to actually making sure we had those roads in good drivable condition.
Sounds good. Thank you. Counselor Stale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to state for the record, I disagree with you about the snow. I would appreciate some snow. We have a season come along. It's snow means a lot to me and my grandchildren, so I would like some snow.
Just white fluffy that we don't have to push around, then.
Exactly. Half inch at a time.
Right. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. We'll move to the next presentation. Chief of Staff Erica Beck with the 85th Street and I-29 Interchange Project. I know that there are several interested folks here today. I see a lot of friendly faces here for this item as well, and so if anyone should want to give public comment on any of the items, we will take that at the end for anyone interested, just to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Erica Beck with the mayor's office. This project is near and dear to me, so I'm grateful for Director Cotter for giving me the opportunity to introduce it today. While this effort, as you will see in future slides here in the presentation, started back in 2008, I had an opportunity to get involved in 2014 under my previous role outside of city government. The group of landowners that I worked with from 2014 to earlier this year represent truly the best of our community in our region. Their investment into Sioux Falls and their partnership with various governmental entities to move this interchange project forward has been truly nothing short of monumental. In fact, there are no other partnership efforts like this that are being pursued today in our state. On the screen, you will note five entities involved in this partnership, including the Department of Transportation. Department of Transportation, Lincoln County, the City of T, the 85th Street Property Owners Group, and the City of Sioux Falls. I describe this project as monumental because it is rare that you have this many entities come together to move a transportation infrastructure improvement forward. It is also monumental because this lone interchange will lead to the direct development of roughly 1,500 acres of land in our region. And it's truly a regional project because of all of those various entities that I just listed that are involved and that will be directly impacted by the real estate development that occurs on this property. This will, of course, then lead, once the interchange is completed, to an incredible change in the skyline of this area and of our region that could, again, lead to real estate development unlike anything that we've seen to date within our community. Before I turn this over to Director Cotter to talk about the project history and the next steps moving forward, I just want to take a moment to recognize the individuals in this room that represent the various entities involved in this project, the public-private partnership that has moved this interchange project forward. Many are in the audience this afternoon, I think I have everyone listed here, but I just want to name them real quickly if I could. Representing the landowners team, Joel Dykstra is in the room, Austin Parks, Paul Haig, Kent Cutler, Joel Engel. From Lincoln County, Mr. Jim Schmidt. And then the consultants that are working on the various key studies to move, move this project forward, S E H Engineering, the consultants are here as, with us as well. And then a couple of key staff internally that I wanted to point out, when I was outside of my current role in the private sector, both Mark Cotter, Director Mark Cotter, as well as Shannon Austin, were very critical to the landowners group, as well as the other entities involved in this project in order to get it moving in the right direction, given the momentum that we had back in 2014 to do so. And so I wanted to make sure to point them out as well. So with that, thank you very much for letting me introduce this. Back in 2015, I had an opportunity to come before the council at that time and give a presentation from a different stakeholders' perspective on this project, and I'm happy to be back in my role currently representing the city's perspective on this project to date. Mr. Cotter?
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Nice job. It's nice to see a, a strong amount of the project team that's been working diligently to advance this project. So, we have a few more slides to frame up what's all occurred out here. We passed the 10-year mark here recently, and so this one's probably going to take us closer to 15 years to ultimately get completely done. We typically see an interchange get, go from concept to construction in about eight to 10 years. This one's a little bit more complicated because of its proximity next to I-29 and 229. All right. It's, it's a little confusing out here because there's been two kind of key studies that have taken place. Paul Haig and I just had this conversation the other day, and so the takeaway really from this slide is, there's, there's going to be four studies completed here. Three are done and one is yet to be accomplished. The first one that's, that's highlighted, just simply the overpass. If we just took an overpass on 85th Street and flew over 29, we did that alignment study, and then we did the environmental assessment, that was approved. And then we, when the landowners stepped forward here recently, this was the second interchange justification report that was started. And ultimately, a lot of work went into that. The landowners funded that effort, and then that just recently got approved from an engineering, safety, and operations perspective. Now we're going to test that preferred alternative against any of the environmental constraints, things like cultural, wetlands, things of that nature. And so that's about a 20-month process, and we're hoping we can make a checkmark in that final box in about early 2020 and ultimately make this interchange a reality. Okay? All right, we've got about three slides here. It's got a lot of text on it, a lot of history. I just want to highlight some of those key ones for you. On this slide, in June of 2009, really the draft interchange justification, the first interchange justification report was submitted. Shortly after that, Federal Highway revised and added about eight new rules. One of those rules that came out noted there in October of 1909, where largely this area was still agricultural, it's undeveloped, the arterial streets weren't there, and so they came back and said, you've got to start to build out your arterial streets, you can't do these two things in parallel. And so we've done, we're doing that. You've seen a lot of arterial street work out there, but also yet to come, we'll highlight that today, and then really do an entire phasing and funding plan for this entire region. And so those things have been done and submitted. All right, second page of the project history, in April of 2011, Solberg Avenue Overpass, that was constructed, a joint project between the state and the city, really opened up kind of the release valve from that area between the mall all the way down to 85th Street with that key bridge over 229. In February 2013, DOT and the city begin the 85th Street and I-29 Overpass Environmental Assessment. So again, we did the alignment, and then we had to actually test that preferred alternative against the environment. Got that, it's been subsequently approved. In January 2014, the 85th Street Joint Venture Ownership Group went out to PEAR to really discuss the need for this interchange and, and the need is now. And so that really started the, bringing that group together. September 2014, the first draft of the Overpass EA was submitted, and so you can see, there's two studies going on concurrently here, and that's why it's a little bit confusing on, doesn't chronologically fit, because you essentially, you were testing two different designs. One was just an overpass, one's an interchange, and most of that work was being done in parallel. December 2014, South Dakota Department of Transportation and Lincoln County signed a MOU for the interchange funding. We've got a, more information on that on the next slide. Commissioner Jim Schmidt, as Erica mentions, here today. January 2015, S E H, they've got representatives in the front row, were hired by the 85th Street Property Owners Group to really develop that first interchange justification report. All right. Now in July of 2016, Lincoln County Commission passes a resolution to commit funding $15 million to this interchange, one of, one of the key legislative moves that's happened in this partnership with these five entities. September 2017, Sioux Falls City Council approves the pre-annexation agreement with, and the funding plan that really ties these five entities together. February 2018, 85th Street, I-29, the interchange justification report was submitted. And so we had, we've had a lot of really good discussions over the years, a lot of technical memorandums back and forth, submitted it. As soon as we submitted it, received some comments that we had to do some additional work. And then ultimately, if you look at that last entry, October 30th, 2018, we got the ultimate approval for what was originally submitted back in February for the interchange that, as it's designed. This is a, one of the favorite letters that we received, and starting in the second paragraph is exactly what we were after. This comes from Federal Highway, is the Division Director in PEAR, and that states, based on our review, the proposed interchange for 85th Street, presented as Alternative 1 in the IJR, is acceptable based on safety, operations, and engineering. And then subsequently goes on to say, next step is to do the environmental assessment. So, we just wanted to give you guys a flavor of some of those key documents that we received throughout the course of the study. There was a lot of enthusiasm happened after this came out. All right. This is Alternative 1, that picture, and I may just kind of path through this. In November of 2018, we started with S E H and these five entities to start the environmental phase of this alternative. We expect that that could take 18 to 24 months. July of 2020, we would hope to have that behind us and actually start the, the true final design and, and acquiring any necessary right-of-way that's needed for the proposed improvements, with an anticipated start of construction in 2020. If you've not seen this, I just want you to think about if you've, if, as you're coming southbound on 229, you'll see that green ramp that you can take to the right, that'll ultimately take you to the 85th Street interchange. If you're southbound on 29, you'll take that yellow off-ramp, it'll have a flyover bridge over that merge lane and then take you to that interchange. As well as if you're heading north, you'll see if you're heading north off 85th Street, there's a yellow line that's essentially drawn in all the way to the Louise Avenue interchange. If you don't need to get on the interchanges, you'll have a, you'll have a dedicated lane that goes from one interchange to the next. All right, we, on the preferred alternative is a diverging diamond. You're going to start to see these throughout the state. Western side of the state, we'll get the first one. This one is, this one in 41st Street, near the mall, will be really one of the two that we'll see first on this part of the state, and we've got a quick video to show you. All right, essentially what the diverging diamond interchanges do is something very similar to what happens in a roundabout where they make those safe movements, all essentially right, right-turn lanes. They have essentially tried to replicate that here with left-turn movement. So you don't have to, the left-turning vehicles don't have to turn against opposing traffic. And so essentially, a diverging diamond is just simply, they cross the traffic over at the beginning and the end of a interchange. They're much higher volume, and in a typical interchange, you'll see about 29 conflict points where vehicles can actually crash into each other. This design reduces that from 29 down to 14. This goes on for about three minutes, but I'll, I'll have the link embedded for you guys to watch it on your own. Okay, just a few wrap-up slides. So this is one of those graphics that came out of the new rules, that you had to develop an entire funding and phasing plan. We're going to highlight for you some of the key investments today that the city of Sioux Falls will make to support the growth and development of this area that will also feed into the interchange. All right, so our flagship project for 2019 will be to improve 69th Street in front of the Heart Hospital. This is a tired stretch of road, it's in some areas only two lanes wide. It will be widened to an urban four-lane facility. We've got a graphic for you here, and so essentially on the left-hand side, that's Medical Court, and then we'll develop the four-lane facility all the way through Connie and then transition down toward Louise Avenue. So our goal is, if we can acquire the necessary right-of-ways, to actually bid this in late January. All right, 85th Street's the next arterial street that we need to put our attention to. We did get started on that in 2018. We got a small portion of it done, just due west of Louise Avenue, and then we're, we'll initiate the design on the rest of it in 2019. Give you a picture, and this was the section that got completed last year. This essentially starts at Louise on the right-hand side of the page and then transitions west through Hughes Avenue and then transitions down. Beyond there, there's an enormous amount of growth and development that's happening, and we've essentially just gone out there with city paving teams to provide hard surface on that gravel as that area matures. In the coming next two and a half years, you'll see this arterial street network get built out to support the current growth and development and also the interchange work. All right, wrap-up. It's been very cooperative effort between all five entities. The expansion of the arterial streets support the MPO 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan. Multi-year process, like normally, if you have a standalone interchange, say at like Marion Road and I-90, that takes eight to 10 years to develop. Anytime you get near a system interchange like this one with 229 and 29, the challenges with spacing that comes, this one's taken a little bit longer. But ultimately, we'll get there, and then there'll be economic benefit for years to come. We got a lot of different members of the project team, and so if you have, if you have questions, any one of us are here to answer them.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mark and Erica. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Cotter. That diverging diamond design, that is cool. 29 to 14 crash points. What, did I, is it crash points it's called again, or how?
Yeah, conflict points. And so like if you go to a typical interchange, intersection today, as a left turner, you're going to turn likely against opposing traffic, unless you have your own dedicated phase, a green arrow that says only left turners. But once that green arrow goes away and it's just a green ball, if you will, and you're turning against opposing traffic, that's a conflict point. Okay? In a typical interchange, there's 29 of those that can exist, and a diverging diamond reduces that to 14. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing. So just in general, like the cost of, let's say we're, you're, obviously we're doing it this design versus the old way, or the standard way up till then, what's the, any idea or difference in cost of?
I vaguely remember, the matrix actually shows that these are also the most cost-effective as well. That's right.
Great. Last question is, it's been a long, no pun intended, road for this project. Has it been, I mean, did it start, again, I could look it up here, but I mean, has it been on track since the beginning? Have there been starts and stops? Have there been, or is it pretty much everything's been going according to plan and we're getting there as we're supposed to?
And no, this is, this one's a, this is a marathon, not a sprint. And so essentially, you know, this probably frames it up best, Counselor, where, you know, in 2008, the city of Sioux Falls and DOT started to study that I-29, Solberg, how 85th Street and 69th Street will cross. And then that dovetailed into in 2009, submitting an interchange justification report, because in a perfect world, this would be in place by now. Well, at that time, that's when Federal Highway revised some rules, added some additional criteria, and ultimately went quiet for a number of years. And then when the ownership group came forward and said that they would advance fund the new revised interchange justification report, and then ultimately they're going to fund the environmental assessment. So the, their, part of the transaction is that they're, they, in the pre-annexation agreement that the city council approved in 17, they have $4 million of, that are coming into this project. And then, very similar to what current ordinance allows, is that they can get a credit on platting fees, but they first had to advance those funds. And so we're going to keep track of all those dollars. But they essentially, the ownership group is funding all this current interchange study and design work at this point.
Okay, yeah. Well, appreciate you.
That's what makes it a public-private partnership.
Right. Appreciate the diligence and persistence. It's nice to see it getting a little closer, so.
Yes, amen.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, everybody, and for everybody who's present this afternoon that's involved in this project. Like Counselor Selberg, I'm excited to see the selection of another diverging diamond, because as you stated, that does greatly reduce the number of conflict points. And if you've ever been through one as a motorist, I would wager to say that you're probably halfway through it before you even realize what's happening. It just happens very naturally. So it might appear to be complex, but it really is not. And it's, and it's especially great for those left-turning vehicles, because it, it does reduce those conflict points there. This has just wonderful potential for development for the city of Sioux Falls in particular as it relates to the southwest portion of the city, and really that whole south-central portion, because it gives yet another major access to the city of Sioux Falls from, from, coming up from the south, or, or regardless of direction that you're traveling. So, and, and it is, I, I know, you know, and I was just, to go back in terms of the impact, probably as much impact as what as much impact as what we've been discussing with the interchange up at I ninety and South Dakota one hundred and the impact it has on the east side of Sioux Falls. It can do that to the southwest portion of Sioux Falls and have similar impact to what we see currently on I twenty-nine along from twenty-sixth street down to Forty-first street. We could see that kind of development here. It's going to be bigger than I think anybody has imagined, quite frankly. But I know that it seems like it's been moving slow, but is it not actually moving faster than some of these projects normally would, especially because of the involvement of the private sector?
I would absolutely agree that it's now moving faster because of their financial contribution and coupled with, there's just a lot of cooperation between Sioux Falls, city of T, Lincoln County, DOT and the ownership group. And so there's, and it's all stewards. And so sort of that foundational utility is there. Silver Creek Overpass really was a key opener. So there's a number of sort of the bones are in place for this to really thrive.
And again, that should not be overlooked, the involvement of the private sector in this particular project. Number one, putting it on the radar of state, city and county officials to begin with and then stepping up with actually financing aspects of this project that have not been done before by the private sector. And then, as you stated, the cooperation between city and county governments to help make this happen, to put the infrastructure in place to make this happen. It's a wonderful project and thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sealy. Mark, what's the total cost of this project?
The current estimate for the interchange itself is about twenty-five million.
So, well, the public-private partnership total, so that's twenty-five million of that, the whole.
That's right. And so then we'll also have, if you look at part of the funding plan, you know, we would have already had a baseline cost in this area just to build out our normal arterial streets. And then with the cost of the interchange, that's where that ultimately gets broke down, that interchange itself essentially from the tie-down point. And then the additional lanes on the interstate right now is estimated at about twenty-five million.
So do you have a breakdown of how much each entity is putting into this?
We do. Yeah, I don't have it with me, but I can certainly follow that up.
Yeah, like the city of T, you don't know how much they're putting forth?
I don't want to speculate over. It's been a little while since I've had those breakdowns, but they have a proportionate share of that section of eighty-fifth street and how that ramps up to the bridges.
Okay, and so you don't know offhand how much the city of Sioux Falls is?
I knew those details about six months ago. I just didn't bring it to.
Okay, and are we going to get another update on this in the future?
Certainly. Any, you know.
It'd be nice, I'd like a breakdown. That'd be nice to see what each entity, yeah, and maybe you could get that to me, too.
Yeah, I think one of the key things that we highlighted was with Lincoln County having the foundational investment of fifteen million. Yeah, let me, I still want to follow up with you, so I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Counselor Brecky.
Thank you. You had talked about land acquisitions. How much of that is left and how much do we have acquired? And is there, you know, what is, how is that part of it coming along? How much more land do we have left to acquire?
Well, actually, we technically are not supposed to start land acquisition until we have an approved environmental assessment. And so what's going to be, I think, very beneficial here is there's very few landowners to work with and the ownership group generally doesn't own all of it, but they generally own the majority of the land that we'll be needing to look at. And so I think that there's maybe, if we go back to the, you know, if you look at on here, Counselor, just where the typical right-of-way that exists for I twenty-nine and two twenty-nine and then where those auxiliary lanes are needs, need to be built, that will need to be acquired. And essentially, you know, a fairly wide section on eighty-fifth street as we raise eighty-fifth street up to the bridge and then take it back down for the touchdown points, all that outside of the normal plating area would need to be acquired. So that, you know, in 2020, the current study that's underway has the consultants, S C H, doing the environmental work and also about thirty percent of the design. Once we get through thirty percent of the design, we'll have a really good idea where those lands are. And then the goal would be to really focus on that in 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? I have a couple. If I can pull up Joel Dykstra, I just want to bring him up as one of the representatives from the ownership group and ask you a couple of questions as you're making your way up. I also want to mention that the Harrisburg School District, while they have been at the table as well and super supportive of this particular project, as we all know that when you see that development take place, there'll be a huge benefit in property taxes for the Harrisburg School District being in that area as well. And so I certainly want to mention them. Joel, I want to talk to you a little bit. I've been on a lot of these meetings with the ownership groups previously and recently. And I want you to talk a little bit about the investment that this owners group is making. I think that this is not common throughout the state. It's a really big deal. And I want you to talk a little bit about what it is you're putting forward in your ownership group as kind of the spokesperson of that group and just talk to me a little bit about that.
Thank you, Counselor. It's, the group has come together and formed a joint venture agreement which basically says that we'll act as a, as an organization or as a group until someday in the future when we're obviously going to be competitors with land out there. But together, we have agreed to a sharing formula where we contribute each, our proportionate amount of the funds that are required. We've already paid something in the area of two hundred thousand dollars for the interchange justification report. We've got about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional project in front of us right now for the environmental assessment and for some initial studies and design work for the project. So we're basically able to do some of those things simultaneously rather than having to do them in sequence, which would obviously take longer. It also allows us to do private contracts with that consulting group rather than going through some of the state bid processes and some of the more cumbersome, difficult challenges that administer those contracts with public entities. So we're putting that money forward. There's a total amount committed of four million dollars. It'll be divided among those owners under the proportions that we've committed to. And in the meantime, we agree to the next contract. We contribute the funds that are necessary to cover the invoices and then we administer that process on the private side and get them paid. And all of that is done at risk. If the project doesn't actually come together, that's our tough luck. If it does, we will be able to recover some of those funds in, over time, against the plating fees that we would pay anyway.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. One of the things that I just want to make reference to is, you know, originally this was an overpass, which means go right over it and keep on going without stopping. And so the intent has been to really have this interchange, to be able to get people to stop and see the development spur. And that's, you know, your ownership group's responsibility to do with that. And the fact that you are eventually going to be competitors and are currently working lock and step is nothing short of impressive as well with that. I've had a few conversations with Chief of Staff Beck, who put it in perspective for me that, you know, where Meadows on the River is with twenty-sixth and Louise there, it's a hundred and sixty acres of development and the primary sales tax is funded from that area with Walmart, the movie theater, Sam's Club, all of that. It's just a hundred and sixty acres and the impact it has in Sioux Falls is huge. We're talking fifteen hundred acres of development someday. And the impact that has to our city is just outstanding. And so I thank everyone for working together. It's been fun to be part of the process and really just be a silent watcher at most of these meetings. It's been really fun. So thank you for the update. We welcome you back anytime you keep checking those boxes off and have more to report to us. It's very exciting for our community. So thank you very much. We will move on.
Counselor Chair.
I have, sorry, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Mr. Dykstra, so coming back to what I asked Director Cotter, of the piece of your contribution, so four million would be plugged into that, would that be correct or is that? Okay, so that answered one part of that question. And is that the total amount or will there be more contributions coming?
From?
You.
From us. Our amount under the pre-annexation agreement, which the council approved in two thousand seventeen, all of that amount, all of those allocations are spelled out in that document that was approved last year. And it's four million dollars to the private sector. It's probably the largest single amount for the interchange is federal dollars. The city of Sioux Falls has a lot of infrastructure and other things to put forward. The Lincoln County, having made that initial commitment of fifteen million dollars, it really can't be overstated how important that is.
Oh, yes.
And all of the players coming to the table with real money. It's a big deal. It's a big project.
Thank you. And speaking of that, I would like to ask our Lincoln County Commissioner Jim Schmidt to come forward. Can you add anything? Can you add anything to my question about?
The, since we represent the taxpayers of Lincoln County, I think this is an historic event. I think it's the first time that a county of our size has stepped up and committed that size of revenue, fifteen million dollars for a population that will be approaching sixty thousand. But in our vision from the county, this will be a tremendous benefit, not only to the city of Sioux Falls, but to the school district of Harrisburg, but also to the county. Because the only way county budgets can grow is through growth and this has potential in, you know, in the billions of dollars. I think that it also shows that Lincoln County certainly has recognized its obligation to be a willing partner in the growth of the city of Sioux Falls and this whole area. They're not just an entity that lies south of Sioux Falls that's agricultural-based because Lincoln County is more urbanized than it is anything else. So I was proud to bring our commission to this vote and we'll be working with our, with the DOT on a repayment plan because no one ever talks about that. But you know as well as I do, you borrow money and you have to pay it back. So Lincoln County is also working with a payment ban. Darren Berquist and I meet next week and just start our discussion on our payments and over length of time. But thank you for the opportunity and I think it's going to be a bonanza for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. One more question for Director, that, thank you. So I'm just, in the, moving ahead, what is the council going to be asked to vote on or is, nothing? Is it's a done deal? Will we be making any more decisions about this?
Well, probably the foundational decision that you make is in the capital plan as we fund arterial streets. And we just got through the capital plan for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. You know, that essentially funds sixty-ninth street in front of the Heart Hospital. That'll be our key project for next year. We'll also begin the design of South Tall Grass and eighty-fifth street, what's gravel today, which will then prepare them for a grading utility project and ultimately up-surfacing project. So really, your key steps are each year during the capital plan and supporting the growth and development through those projects.
So when we, when we're partnering with the state and other entities, we never have to sign a special agreement. I mean, the council isn't called upon to sign off in a special way versus just a road construction project.
If we do a joint project with the state, we do do an agreement. So it lays out the funding streams for both. But essentially there's a step that happens before that, which is actually if they are, so we have, for investing in roads, you have sales tax and then we also, based on our population, think our allocation's about five point two million dollars a year. And so we bank those dollars, like that's, those are the dollars that we're funding our portion of the twenty-sixth street project this year that'll bid here in January. That's the same revenue stream that we'll utilize to pay for our portion of the eighty-fifth street interchange. And so that table, it's, it was in your pre-annexation agreement. That's what I'll ultimately send you. It's got a lot of detail in it. That's why I just didn't want to speculate today on what those five entities are and I can ultimately upload that to the council sire as well.
But there won't be any contracts coming through that we have to approve in the consent agenda or?
You know, we're still in the study phase and so if there are, I'll certainly highlight those for you.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions on this topic? Seeing none, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it and we look forward to the updates along the way. So thank you again for your investment in Sioux Falls and the region as a whole. Our next item is Verizon Master License Agreement, small cell technology. T J, I know you will be kicking us off. Thank you.
Good afternoon. T J Nelson with the mayor's office. There's one thing I hope you've learned from the early days of Mayor Tenhaikin's administration is that he is all about innovation and technology. And there's few examples better than the five G infrastructure for our city that highlight both innovation and technology. So first question, what is five G? Well, what we're talking about is the fifth generation of wireless technology. It's what fuels our phones, our broadband. It's how we get online basically and use our mobile devices. Just to look back of kind of the evolution of the generations, how we got here. Back in nineteen seventy-nine, the first generation launched and it was an analog system for voice calls. So think back to the Zack Morris, you know, cell phone's the size of a brick. That's kind of that first G. And that lasted until about nineteen ninety-one when it transferred to digital network for mobile services. And that expanded to data, allows basically to start text messaging, send some photos. Jumped to three G. That just increased the speed of those data transfers, started to support some video calls, low resolution, but nonetheless opened up new avenues for our devices. Going to four G, that's what we currently have. Two thousand eight really expanded the mobile broadband internet access, provided data needs for live streaming. So you could watch your Netflix on a city bus. You can download data at faster rates, FaceTime and whatnot. So five G is even faster. It's about ten times faster than current four G technology. And it's going to make our communication devices even more powerful. And it also means a lot of opportunities for innovation. You know, looking back to even the early nineties, I don't think any of us envisioned all of the innovation that's happened thanks to the internet, mobile devices, et cetera. So five G is, five G is here. It's really not a question of when it will come to Sioux Falls, not if it'll come to Sioux Falls, but when. In fact, there already are some small cell towers throughout our community on some private land and in public right-of-ways. Summer twenty eighteen, handful of nations launched five G networks in select cities. Go to October, Verizon became the first U.S. city to launch five G in four cities. And those were for fixed broadband connections for home and business. And then just earlier this month, South Korea became the world's first country to roll out their nationwide five G connectivity. So it's really a matter of time for when this is fully implemented in Sioux Falls. So that's why we're here today to talk to you about some of those early steps to bring that here. This map just shows you kind of some of the five G markets throughout the U.S. right now. You know, there's really four major carriers who are implementing those. And as you can see, they're in the larger metro areas throughout the U.S. So back to the innovation opportunities for five G, really they are endless, but some of the things we're really looking at are just quality life enhancements. You know, this is kind of a workforce driver as we attract millennials to Sioux Falls want to move here. Five G network's a big deal to them. Also it can enhance a lot of just your average consumer's reliability and connectivity. Economic development opportunities. This is going to drive businesses to build new technologies. We have a lot of technology-based companies in Sioux Falls who will benefit from these, including our healthcare networks, you know? Think of doing a livestream with a doctor at an e-tel health center, getting four K resolution of an X-ray or whatever. A lot of those great opportunities for the economy. As a city, smart city infrastructure, you know. As a city, smart city infrastructure, you know, traffic signal enhancements, public safety enhancements, there's a lot of great opportunities that are at market now, and there'll be even more of that come over the next coming several years. And then, of course, autonomous vehicles. For autonomous vehicles to be a reality, you really need a network with the speed and data capabilities that 5G offers. So with that, I will turn it over to our city attorney, Stacy Koestra, who will kind of talk about the contract.
Oh, yes. Good point. Also mention that we do have some representatives from Verizon here, who I'm sure will be happy to answer any questions you may have when our city attorney is done.
Thank you. Welcome, Stacy.
Good afternoon, Councilor Stacy Koestra, Sioux Falls City Attorney. I'm going to attempt to distill for you 31 pages of legalese into a brief to help break down for you and for the public, frankly, what this contract contains, as you'll be the ones considering and ultimately voting on that. Even as I think Councilor Erickson noted when she introduced this, that's a mouthful right there, the small cell master license agreement. What that basically is, is the contract. It's a contract between the city of Sioux Falls and Verizon to enhance cell service. And the contract itself is designed to facilitate the introduction of this technology and service to the city. So why do we have a contract? The Telecommunications Act of 1996, which was sponsored by South Dakota's own Larry Pressler, requires local authorities, such as the city of Sioux Falls, to work with telecommunications company. And of course, Verizon is a telecommunications company. We are not able to prohibit or impose requirements that have the effect, basically, of delaying this enough that it constitutes a ban. Okay? So what that means is there are what are referred to as shot clocks. Personally, I've never had much use for a shot clock. But they do exist in law, so we have that to deal with. What that basically means is there's a timing element to this. And so what that means, in effect, is that we have to allow, the city of Sioux Falls must allow telecommunications companies to use the public right of way. And we are allowed to charge fees for that. The fees, however, per federal law, must be competitively neutral and public. And the FCC's interpretation of that federal law means, and again, we get into some legal terms of art here, but the fees must approximate objectively reasonable costs and be non-discriminatory, meaning between carriers. The bottom line is that 5G is coming. We do, of course, have those right of ways throughout our city. And it's in the city's best interest to address that via the use of a contract. Overview of the contract, of course, the parties to it are the city of Sioux Falls and ComNet Cellular, Inc., which does business as Verizon Wireless. This contract was negotiated by the city attorney's office in consultation with a number of other departments. I can tell you, within the city attorney's office, we would not be where we are today without Diane Best. She did not want me to mention her name, but I can't help it because she is the tip of our spear. And she's phenomenal and been very thorough. But the other, you know, Jerry Jungling and the other members of the various departments have been invaluable in helping to put this, again, this 31-page document together. The contract requires favorable consideration by the Parks Board. There's actually typo up there. It's, they, the Parks Board did recommend approval on November 18 of this year. And of course, this will be presented to the council at some point and prior to its institution. And the signator on the contract would be Mayor Tenhaken. So what do we negotiate? This is kind of a summary of many of the other terms of my brief. So I will just kind of touch on these briefly. The small cell attachments, I think many of not all of you are already familiar with what that maybe looks at. I do have some photos later in the brief to help show you what exactly that means. But it's whether to allow those small cell attachments on city light poles, in effect, co-located with those poles, of course, subject to the right-of-way comments I had earlier, or standalone poles. Of course, the length of the term of the contract and extensions, the rates, city control over the location and placement of those small cells, the installation and eventual removal, maintenance, repair, and that type of thing for existing poles, non-interference, meaning with other carriers. And then, of course, other legal, there's a lot of other legal details in there. The length of this contract is 10 years. It would contain one five-year extension, unless that would be terminated by either party. If you look back on the slide that TJ referenced, you can look at that timeline that roughly runs in the 10-year range. So it's kind of frightening to think of 6G, frankly, maybe just for me. But, so that's where we are, is on a 10-year contract. In the event that the city council approves this contract, the location of all individual sites of these small cells will be reviewed by city staff prior to their replacement. Now, in addition to the 31 pages of contract, there is an exhibit to that that specifies the process and the details related to the city's review of that replacement. Also Verizon, the other carriers, will be required to obtain their own radio frequency analysis by a licensed professional when installing the equipment. In short, on the right-of-way placement, we must allow that, as long as city standards are met and public works in planning and zoning and parks would ultimately have discretion over the location of those. All the installations, regardless of their location, are subject to city inspections. And Verizon will be, in the event of approval, Verizon will install underground facilities and then handle its own call-before-you-dig type of locates and those sort of things for digging throughout the city. Historic globe-type poles must be replaced with similar types of poles. And at the end of the day, when it comes to location, city use of the right-of-way in the poles remains paramount. When reviewing those locations, in other words, reasons for denial of placement of those, these are the things that would be considered, capacity, safety, reliability, or engineering concerns. The code standards, any number of those, as well as zoning and the aesthetics, attempting to have these blend as much as possible within our city for appearance purposes. Here's an example of a private small cell here in Sioux Falls, in the Best Buy parking lot over by the West Mall. Here are a couple in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Now, they're a little hard to see. Anybody who's been to a Vikings game, it would recognize US Bank Stadium, of course. So there's one right there in the middle of the windows, basically, and then one on that light pole. Now, these are photos I got this afternoon from Jerry Jungling. And what these, these are actually the type of design that we would have here in Sioux Falls. These are in place in Des Moines. And so I think they're of particular note for the council. Placement in parks, we talked about right-of-ways. While parks are a separate category, where the Parks Director would have a great deal of discretion regarding the placement or denial of the small cell poles in our parks. The primary contract purpose for, is for right-of-way, the primary contract purpose is for right-of-ways, but it does include this potential use on streetlights in parks and potential standalone poles, if I'm not mistaken. Of course, recreational purposes are primary in parks, whereas street lighting is primary in the right-of-way. The same codes, engineering standards, and insulation criteria would apply in parks as well as it does for the right-of-way. There are other areas that do not meet in those, for example, municipal parking lots. And those would remain in the sole discretion of the city within the terms of this contract as far as placement goes. These are the fees and costs. Some specifics there, the application fee would be $500 per pole, with an annual pole rental paid to the city of $175 per pole. And then there's also an allotment in there for what we call incidental costs or make-ready costs, which would be one-time $6,000 in outside consultant expenses. As we touched on earlier, federal law and the FCC control many of these things. And so these rates, as negotiated in the contract, are consistent with the FCC determinations. That being said, the city, we did also build in the right to conduct a rate study to adjust the rates, because the intent here is cost neutrality, that this would be an opportunity for city if we suspected that it was not cost-neutral for the city, that we would be able to obtain a rate study to adjust those rates to ensure cost neutrality. And Verizon would install and pay for their own electricity related to their service. Lastly, it's my last slide, there's environmental and health aspect to this. The act that I mentioned at the beginning, the Telecommunications Act, preempts cities and local governments from regulating wireless communications on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. Now, with federal court, this, of course, has been litigated in a number of jurisdictions and venue. And the federal courts have consistently held that environmental effects include health considerations, which means that that would not be something the city would be eligible to consider when considering the contract. And ultimately, Verizon and other carriers are required to obtain their own radio frequency analysis when installing their equipment, because carriers are not allowed to interfere with each other. And so they're responsible for that as well. So with that, I will take any questions. We have subject matter experts in various areas, so I will take those, or TJ, or?
Sounds great. Thank you. Are there any questions for anyone on the team?
Counselor Staley. So how did Verizon get chosen to be the carrier for this?
Well, I can tell you from a city point of view that I believe Verizon is first in time. And I think Diane can probably provide additional details on that, but...
I mean, but were there other possibl, do other?
There are other possi-
There certainly are other carriers. Verizon is the first carrier to approach the city of Sioux Falls.
Any other questions?
Okay, I've got another question. So then, I'm also hearing, I've heard concerns from people, of course, Stacy, this would probably be for you. But people, of course, are concerned about the safety aspect of this, and it is going to be sitting down lower to the ground than other mechanical devices. What can we, they expect to see in their own residential areas? Like, how close would this be allowed to be to a home?
Well, again, when we talk about right-of-way placement or placement in parks, I mean, the typical lawyer answer is it depends, right? I mean, it depends on the house and depends on the location related to the right-of-way. I mean, you have a couple different aspects to your question there, the other being the, you know, concerns about location or concerns about health, you know, on the health or safety side, that's simply outside of our jurisdiction. And so they would have to contact, you know, federal elected officials or the FCC.
But like, so anyone, really, anyone who has a telephone pole outside their home could have one of these installed? Would that be correct to say that? Or a light pole? Am I correct in saying that?
If a person had right-of-way, in the right-of-way, in front of their home, if there was a streetlight, there is potential for that streetlight to be replaced with, to have Verizon or other small cell attachments to it, or for that streetlight to be replaced by a carrier such as Verizon to make it a more structurally capable of handling both city lighting and small cell attachments. And those poles could be in front of residential areas.
And the res, of course, they're not going to have any say in that. Right? I mean, that's, if they decide that they're going to put that, like in front of my house, they're going to replace the light pole and put a 5G connector there. A resident in Sioux Falls, they're just going to have to let that happen, right?
Under today's city ordinance, a carrier like Verizon or Verizon could seek a utility permit from the city of Sioux Falls and put a standalone pole in the right-of-way for small cell technology. Today, under ordinance as approved by the city of Sioux Falls, this contract would allow companies like, or well, it would allow Verizon to come and put attachments actually on streetlights for a fee.
Right. And then, how far apart would they have to be within a residence? Could you, like, if, is there going to be a limit as to the proximity they have within each other? So that, I mean, so somebody, let's say in a block, could you possibly have two streetlights on either side of your block, and each one would have one of these devices on them?
I'd actually like to follow up on your prior question about any concerns residents may have if this goes in there. Just to follow up on Diane's answer to that, is there's potential for that, a pole to go anywhere within the right-of-way as already determined by the Telecommunications Act. So what this contract does, and why this contract is in many respects important, is because it clarifies and ensures the city's discretion over the placement of those poles, as opposed to Verizon or another telecommunications company exercising their right just to place poles within the right-of-way.
I understand, but it still is, who's making the decision where those things are going to go? So apparently, the city is making that decision.
Well, contractually, as discussed in my brief, the city does have discretion over that. Some of the, and I don't know, maybe the Verizon people want to answer this, but when it comes to the more technical piece, or Jerry, on the distances, that's outside of my legal purview.
Jerry, do you want to, do you want to come up and just give a general? I think the question is, is a telecommunications company going to put multiple on a street, which I don't, I wouldn't think that would be feasible. You have one, that's probably sufficient for a large area. But if you could just give us a high level of what that looks like, what you're being communicated with, just from your perspective for a street and light? Thank you. And then after that, we're going to move on to other counselors. We'll come back to you, Counselor Staley, just to make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask their questions. Thank you, Jerry.
Good afternoon, Council. Jerry Jungling, Light Power Superintendent. So Verizon or any carrier, they will do a study based on what they need for coverage in a particular area. So then they'll come to us with a plan, and they'll run through the plan review. And if it meets our zoning requirements and all of the other city's criteria, we'll let them put it in the right-of-way.
And have you received a plan at this point? Have you received a plan at this point?
No. We're waiting on the contract to be finalized before design and everything comes forward.
Correct. Okay. Any questions from the council? Counselor Necher?
Yeah, I guess it's probably important to stress, and maybe the city attorney was trying to get at this, this is really a co-location contract. I mean, our choice is, do you want the providers to put up a bunch of poles in the right-of-way when we already have them, or use the poles that we already have? Those are your options. And that's about as simple as it gets. And as far as the right-of-way, there's a lot of utilities that run through my right-of-way, and the council doesn't vote on where the gas line goes. And I don't vote if somebody's going to come in and put another utility. So I think that's really sums it down, is comes down to, it's a co-location contract. That's our two options. For the electricity, since you're standing there, if they're going to use, it says they have to provide their own electricity. How would they do that? So they put the box on the pole, or can they tie into ours and somehow have a little meter? Or do they, how does that work?
Sure. Yes. So we have four power providers in town, Southeastern Sioux Valley, ourselves, and Excel Energy. So depending on the territory of this small cell. But we're going to ask any telecommunications, Verizon.
Easy for you to say, yeah, yeah.
To, they'll set their own separate meter and power that small cell directly with them. So they'll get their own bill, just like you do at your house, for that small cell. So the streetlight power is stay completely separate. We'll maintain our space, they'll maintain their bill, no co-mingling.
And, thank you. And I thought I read in the contract, it said one pole per application? You couldn't do, let's say, 10 poles in one applica, what's the thought process there, I guess?
Correct. So we would like to, if they were, if Verizon would like to put in, say, six poles in one particular, you know, many square block area, we'd like to be able to add or subtract or relocate each pole individually and not look at it as a group. So each pole will be able to offer comments on and say yes or no, or offer some different suggestions for them.
And my last one, I, the application fee probably makes, I get that. What is the annual fee? What are we recovering with an annual fee? Is there something that we have to do mechanically yearly? I mean, what's the?
Is basically just a leased space for using our, for our light poles. So they're leasing the space on our pole.
Okay. It's just, just like if I was renting space on anything, I could charge a fee, even whether it's passive or not, I'm just, just for the right to use our pole?
Correct. Yep. Yes.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure who to address the question to, or if anybody has the answer. But I mean, when we look back in history here, if we're going like in the years from, I know none of us were here at the time, maybe- of us were here at the time, maybe somebody, I'll play no offense if you were, but if we're going from 1G to 2G and 2G to 3G, and each time we've gone through this, have we had similar safety concerns? Have we had similar contracts between, like we're looking at now, like every time this has come about? Has there been similar steps taken each time, is, you know, to make way for these upgrades? I guess I'm just trying to kind of summarize, but I mean, is this something where we're going? Because it seems every 10 years, here we are. Are we kind of, is it the same as before, or way different?
I think I'm the oldest one of the group, so, but I don't know specific to city of Sioux Falls whether there have been radio frequency safety concerns raised each time a new technology has arisen. I will tell you this, that the city of Sioux Falls actually has embraced radio transmission and cell use on its water towers. And if you drive around town and you look at our water towers, you can clearly see that. We bring those contracts, as you know, to the city council periodically without objection. And most of those contracts are a long-term contract like we're looking at here. Whether the first one had concerns regarding safety, I just wasn't here, I don't know. I can tell you when I was a little kid, people were concerned about televisions causing issues when the kids were laying in front of the TV. And, you know, those were generalized concerns, and I don't think they panned out, but as far as here today with city of Sioux Falls, I don't have that.
I guess in general, just archived, I just wondered if contracts were archived before for this type of thing? Do we have them in the past from when 3G went to 4G? Did we have a contract? You know what I mean? Isn't that on the books, or?
We certainly have all the contracts going back for many years of various kinds of technology.
Okay, okay. Yeah, keep it simple, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a question for a Verizon representative, if one of you, whoever, would like to come forward. My question, just in general, is, and I hope I'm not out of line by asking this, but as a general rule for the size of our city, what would you see as far as, you know, are you looking at 10 small cells? Are you looking, I mean, is there, is this 150? Is it 1,000? Just for folks that don't deal with technology, what are you looking at as far as Sioux Falls is concerned? If you could come to the podium, I'm sorry, come to the podium and state your name. Thank you.
Mary Julius, Verizon Wireless. Thank you for having us tonight. That question I couldn't answer, I'm with the real estate department, and our first task here is to, to work out an agreement with the city, which is what the city's preference was, to have a master agreement for the co-location on the light pole in your right-of-way. We, right now, the small cells, what we're talking about are strictly a capacity offload. They are not a coverage, they don't cover a broader area, they are to offload the existing macro sites. So the existing macro sites are challenged at certain times of the day, depending upon the usage, and we just need to sort of supplement and add the capacity with the small cell. So the contract and the agreement with the city is our first step, and then really it would be up to our RF engineers to place them as necessary to keep our network running the way the residents of Sioux Falls are used to.
Thank you, I appreciate it, that makes sense. Thank you for answering that. Any other questions from any other counselors? Counselor Staley?
What town would be of comparable size to Sioux Falls that you've serviced? We saw the map up there of where, probably wouldn't want to use Minneapolis, but, because I hadn't even thought about that idea, I mean, if it would be 10, or, because once again, coming back to my question is to, if a resident contacts us and says, well, how close are these things going to be to my home? Do I say, well, you could have one on this corner and then one on this corner?
Yeah, I can and I can't specifically, I mean, it is, it is right now, we are strictly talking about utilizing the right-of-way. So you have other utilities in that right-of-way as well, so we would just be utilizing.
You can't say if they, if they cover a mile radius or a half a block radius?
Up to 1,000 feet, you know, 500 to 1,000 feet, you know.
That helps, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I think the intent is really those high, I mean, you see them on the Viking Stadium, it's in those high-density areas where there's a lot of people using the cellphone service. So at the Premier Center, I'm not saying it's going on there, I'm just saying in general, it's where a lot of people are congregating at different times, and so putting one in front of my house probably doesn't make, maybe it does, I don't know, putting one, you know, in the residential area.
It's an RF, the RF engineers.
Right, but having them in front of said shopping centers where a lot of people congregate, or movie theaters, or whatever, seems to make more sense. But again, that is the job of Jerry and his team, along with the administration, and so we will leave that into your hands to handle. Any other questions before we move to public comment? Seeing none, we will move to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council in regards to any of the three topics that were talked about today? You have five minutes.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Funny how we're talking about all this advanced technology, and we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars upgrading our audio and visual and sire, and I couldn't watch the meeting, the first part of the meeting, because it wasn't working online. It still isn't working, I just tried it a little bit ago. It's kind of funny how we have all this advanced technology and all this money and can't get it to work. Thing is, is a little brief history, sire's been pretty much broken for a decade.
Point of order, Madam Chair. The issue at hand is what needs to be addressed in public input?
I'm addressing the fact that I couldn't watch the meeting for the first two things.
5G is the item, the issue at hand.
Scott, we'd ask that you stay on one of the topics of presentations, and I think Tom's in the other room, and we can certainly pull him over to talk to you afterwards if you would like. I know that they were having issues and the vendor was contacted in regards to that, and I know I interrupted some of your time, so I will definitely grant that.
Well, I was able to actually read the documents online, so I'll address something from finance. I noticed that there was a 32% decline, it seems like we have about a 32% decline in lodging taxes. That seems kind of concerning, and I hope that the visit, Convention and Visitors Bureau is looking into that. A city that's growing this fast and has this much entertainment, we added a brand-new event center that supposedly sells out all these concerts, and we're down 32% in lodging? Something's not adding up there. On the topic of Verizon, I will say this, I use Verizon, I trust them, they're a good company. It's good that we're probably using them to experiment with this. That is, my issue isn't with Verizon, my issue is with the fact that there was no public vetting of this, it was just, we're going to do this, here it is, if you don't like it, take it up with the feds. And when I asked several city counselors this, that's what they told me. Our hands are tied, we can't do anything, the feds are controlling all this. Which I find really ironic, because we call ourselves a home rural charter city, which gives us certain powers. Now, I believe that we have the power to charge more if we want to for leasing, I believe we have the power to tell them where they can put their stuff. But the problem is, I also believe we have the power to do public meetings. Why was this all done behind closed doors? What's the big secret? We keep being told that there's no threat to our health, I kind of believe that. So why did everything have to be done behind closed doors? We're home rural charter city. We should have said, hey, we're home rural charter city, we got to have public meetings, we got to have this out in the open when we're writing this all up. Nope, it's all done, it's all finished, it's all written up, nice tight little package, let's vote on it. No public input, none, zilch. But you know what we do as a home rural charter city? We tell individual property owners how tall their grass has to be, and when they need to scoop their snow, and if they can park an RV in their own driveway. But for some reason, we have no power to tell the FCC or this, this big company what they can do. They get to write the license, because pretty much, I read it, we know who wrote the license, they wrote it. I mean, come on. They wrote the license, they wrote the contract, we were handed it and said, you got to accept it. Unacceptable. I don't care if it's the feds, I don't care if it's state government, I don't care if it's city government. That's not how we do things in a republic. It has to go through a public review process, it did not. It was done all behind closed doors. And like I said, every time I asked a counselor about it, they were like, so are the feds? Like, they're all powerful, they can tell us what to do. So I'd really have you guys look into that, I think with our home rural charter, that we could have had a lot more public input on this and a lot more say in the matter. And hopefully we can get sire fixed by 7 o'clock tonight.
It is back on. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Welcome, ma'am, please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Vicki Hawkinson, and I had called earlier about this. I was wondering why it couldn't be done with fiber optics, or, and I was, I had a question too, of why it has to be a certain height. And then she had mentioned something about off-put. What is off-put? I don't know if somebody can answer that.
I can certainly ask Jerry in regards to the height, if you'd want to comment on that in a minute. And then as far as the off-put, that's just when the system's overloaded and to make sure everyone has access to the cellphone. So sometimes you may get an error message when the systems are down, and it's my understanding that just is to allow additional coverage.
So the microwave has additional power, it's like a boost or something? It's like a, that's what I was wondering, why it has to be a certain height? You know, they're real low. And I had read that fiber optics, they could use fiber optics, it's cost-effective, it's faster, it's less pollution?
All right, thank you, Vicki. And I will have Jerry address any of those other concerns that you have in regards to height and restrictions. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the council?
I'm Mark Weber, I have a couple of comments on the graphs on the Finance Department report. The second graph that you were presented is something that they've done before, but it was in, this is on a table form. I would encourage the Finance Department to change the title of this to the SMSA, Labor Force Unemployment. It is not Sioux Falls, it's SMS standard metropolitan statistical area, is a four-county area of Minnehaw County, Lincoln County, McCook, and Turner County. That was not presented. And the Finance Director stated that this was from the US Department of Labor, it is not. It's from the South Dakota Department of Labor, the E-Labor Bulletin, from Aberdeen. That's just sort of a housekeeping thing. I was also quite surprised to see the sales tax collections month-over-month of November 2018 to November 2017 of being a 9% growth. I think all of a sudden, the data that I've been using and that I've been submitting to the city council for the period of two years, if, that I have a rolling growth rate, I'm changing subjects here, now that you got this maybe about a week and a half ago of about a 4% rolling growth rate, and the city now has it as increasing at a 4.6%. The Finance Director said that the difference in November 2018, November 2017 was about $450,000. My source from the South Dakota Department of Revenue that's published online, the difference between those two months of that online data is about $400,000, which represents a growth rate of about 3.7%. I am also going to be asking the Department of Revenue why there's such a difference between your actual numbers, which are dollars and cents, that are coming from the Department of Revenue, and why there's such a difference in this publication that is published every month, it's over 1,000 pages long, Sioux Falls is about 15 to 17 pages. Why there's, why there's such a, such a difference? This 9% number that you've been given is very surprising to me.
Thank you for your time. Any other public input? Seeing none, we will adjourn this informational meeting and be back here at 7 o'clock. The land use meeting has been canceled. Thank you for your time.